All clear and we are live, so it's five twenty-eight, but you can get started whenever you want.
Who's counting, right? There we go. Alright, well, I will go ahead and call our regular meeting to order, our April twenty-first meeting, and Kathy, please let the record show that all board members are present except for Jill Patterson, and she will be joining us a little bit late tonight. At this time, John, you're the man with the flag in the room, so would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance again?
The screen, we got one in the boardroom and one in the office.
Okay.
As we say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
Of the United States.
To the republic.
Which stands. One nation.
End of his. Liberty. Justice for all.
Justice for all.
Nobody sees her faces.
That's right, that's right.
It's still like we have to stand, I don't have the right approach.
That's right. Our next agenda item is to approve our agenda. So that means that the recommended action is that the board approves the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the first is by Charles, Kathy, the second is by Jerry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Denise?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Our next agenda item is to approve our consent items. Uh, our consent items include the minutes, the finances, and the personnel. Uh, the recommended action is that the board approve consent items two point oh one through four point oh one.
So moved.
Jerry with the first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Denise with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Denise?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Moving along to our next agenda item is five point oh one, so that means Carol's up with her treasurer's report.
Good evening. So we have provided for your review our standard reports, and I would like to highlight for you that the budget amendment and transfer report shows very minimal changes. They are equal to one another, fifteen thousand seven seventy-eight, and they are relative to an increase in expenditures and revenue to support some equipment and storage trailers for the high school track and field. The fund balance, projected ending fund balance for June thirty is currently seventeen point seven-two percent. We know that with everything that is taking place during this pandemic situation that we will see some adjustments to that, but until we approach the end of the year, we will not have full assurance on what that will look like. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for Carol at this time before I read our motion? Okay, hearing none, the recommended action is that the board approves the treasurer's report as presented.
So moved.
Charles with the first, do I have a second?
Charles second, oh, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Bruce with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Denise?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Um, our next agenda item, six point oh one, is our Chief Equity and Diversity Officer Entry Plan Report, and we have Dr. Ivanya Garcia-Pincere, I'm working on that name, I'm gonna get it by the end of this year. Did I do okay, Ivanya?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, she's going to present to us her entry plan report. John, do you want to add any context to set this up?
Just a little, if that's okay, so, uh, I want to welcome Ivanya to the podium tonight, and we're excited to have her present to you for the second week in a row. Last week, she was able to come to the podium and talk to you about the EDAC, the Equity and Diversity Advisory Council work that happened in the fall as well as throughout the spring, and many of you were part of that work, and those list of recommendations are part of her listening and learning tour. She also spent a lot of time engaging with a multitude of other internal and external stakeholders. She's gonna tell you about that journey and how she spent the last six months not only working to serve our kids, but also learning about our system as she entered it. And then she's going to wrap that presentation up by diving into what we believe is the right next step when it comes to equity and diversity, which is expanding our strategic plan with a fifth focus area and a goal. Generation. Uh, she'll walk you through that goal as well as some of the strategies and actions that the administration thinks is necessary to make progress on that goal. She's gonna walk you through a few of those and some timeline information, uh, and then answer questions at the end. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ivanya and let her, uh, tell the story of her entry plan and future recommendations.
And John, and Ivanya, I'm so sorry, I forgot to remind the board that we are going to save our questions and comments um, till the end of the report to let you streamline your presentation to us. And so, board members, just as a reminder, please jot down your notes as you hear the report, and we will have question and answer time at the end. Sorry about that, thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, board members. I'm excited to be here with me tonight to discuss my listening and learning tour as well as discuss next steps for the district. I'm sorry. Alright, um, this slide is just the overview, so go ahead and take a couple of seconds just to review. This really just is a roadmap of what this evening will look like, what the conversation will look like. So we're starting off right now to discuss the Chief Equity and Diversity Officer. As we know, equity and diversity has been done in the district for a long time. It hasn't always been the role of one person, has been the role of multiple people doing different things, but the focus supporting our students. So I want to emphasize again that this work is not new, it's just now looking a little bit different with elevation of a chief position as well as reporting straight to the superintendent. So when I came into this role, my first charge was to conduct the six-month listening and learning tour. As you can see at the bottom, it outlines what this tour looked like. So I visited with at least seventy-three individual organization department meetings within the district and outside of the district. I also visited twenty-three site visits, or twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-three site buildings. In the fall, I visited all the high schools and all the middle schools. In the spring, it was my hope to go to every elementary school, every child development center, and every choice program. However, due to COVID nineteen, that kind of mixed up the plan, so it's my hope that in the fall that I'll be able to continue that. So I wanted to take a moment to pause before I go on with the formal presentation, because I think and believe that context matters. I want you all to understand my story, understand why this work is personal to me, and why I'm going to continue to always be passionate about this work, while I will push myself and my team in the district so that we can be better when it comes to equity and diversity. As you can see here on the slide, these are just pictures of my family. The wedding picture is of my parents, my mother and father, and then the group picture is of myself and my siblings. So when I talk about my story, it does begin with, it does have an impact on me, but it begins with my family. As you can see with my parents, um, some of you may have heard this story, whether it's the individual conversation, previous presentations, or different things I've been reporting to media. But at the end of the day, it's about my parents, who came to this country at a very young age, elementary, elementary age for our students and a middle school age for our students. So when they came to this country, they were very young. They came to this country not knowing the language, they came to this country not really understanding what the educational setting they were going to go into. But they came into this country knowing that education was a value, because it was the value of their parents. There was a reason why they came to this country, it was an aspect of what this American dream can look like. So even though they came to a school that was foreign to them in all levels, not knowing the language, not understanding the culture, they knew they had to be successful in education. My mother wanted to be a teacher, my father wanted to be a dentist. But because of the barriers of the time and other things that were put there on my parents, they weren't able to continue that education. They got to high school, they wanted to go to college, but because, like I said, barriers, they weren't able to do it. So what did they do with that dream? They put it on me and my siblings. They knew that we're gonna have children in this country, we're going to plant roots here, this is what, this is going to be our country. We want our kids to have that American dream, so for them, that was education. So there is many conversations at the table where they talked about that we had to continue on with education, that high school was not the end, maybe even college was not the end, that because if we wanted to be successful, if we wanted to contribute to this country, and we want to contribute to this community, education would be the key. So because of their support, because of their push, because of the grit they put on us so that we can even be successful, because there are also barriers of us being students of color in a predominantly white school system, we were able to do it. So all five of their children have a bachelor's degree. All five of their children have a master's degree. My sister's actually graduating next, um, next month with her masters. And then there's me, who has a PhD. So my parents, they wanted us to go beyond high school, maybe even go beyond college, so me having a doctorate is maybe one of their wildest dreams, that their story brought us here. So that's a little bit of just about me, um, just a little bit about my life, my identity, my history, my parents, why education is important to me, the role it plays in my life. But I also tell you this story because there's other parts to it. As I mentioned, being a student of color in a predominantly white educational system is somewhat of the same stories of our under-resourced and underrepresented students. Some of my desires included having a teacher that looked like me, having a teacher that had similar cultural upbringings, seeing myself in the curriculum, being able to see my history, my cultural history, the contribution of the people in my community or who look like me to this country. Sure, there was a couple, couple samplings of it here and there, but it was never where I really saw myself fully in this curriculum. And I know that's a desire, the desires of some of our students, some of our underrepresented students, they're under-resourced students. So for all intents and purposes, I wasn't underrepresented students. And while my struggles and those barriers are a couple years back, those are some of the barriers and struggles of our students now. I tell you this story as well because I am a mother now. I have a one-year-old son, he's biracial, and it's my hope that when he comes into the district, that it's ready for him, that it's welcoming to him. That's gonna be, the things that he learns in the classroom are going to be affirming of his identities and lived realities, and also teaches them how to engage and exist with people that are different with him, different from him. So that's why I shared this story, because I am passionate about this work, and it's part of my lived reality, it's part of my lived experience, it's personal to me, and it will always push me to be as strong as I can for our students, for all our students, and to always put them at the forefront when we're looking at how do we engage them in an affirming, supportive learning environment. So while my lens is important to me, it's important that I also bring in the multitude of different perspectives. And that's what I got with this listening and learning tour. So we're gonna be talking about the external organizations that I engage with as well as the internal. And I broke it down by different, um, identifiers. You'll see later on where it goes into identity, and then you can see in different organizations. But when I approach this work, I want to approach it through an intersectional framework. Because even though I may have my lens, I have to ensure that other lenses, other perspectives are there too. So I want to bring you down to the bottom of this slide here where it talks about networking. So networking was really important to me, especially with other chief diversity officers. Even though I've been doing this work for a very long time, it is my first time being a chief. And so I wanted to engage with other people who've been doing the work for some time, in the K through twelve system as well as in the higher ed system. So this networking opportunity was very affirming to me, very supportive, and allowed me to be vulnerable when I needed to be vulnerable. As you can see here, here's the different categories I was mentioning, um, being broken down to different identities. Again, as I said, um, it is important to me to be very intersectional. I know race is very salient, it's very much a salient aspect of this conversation when it comes to equity and diversity, but it's important that we look at other perspectives. Race is salient to me as a woman of color, but I know there are other lived realities that are not always part of the conversation. So I want to bring your attention to disability. Abilities First is one of the organizations that I met with. I was very interested to understand what support systems look like for people with disabilities in our community. What does that look like for our students? And what does the relationship look like between the district and this community? Are we doing everything we can to support our students? Is there a strong relationship there? And how can I advocate for this community? This is a list of the different community partners that I met with. As you can see, they vary in different ways on how, what they serve, what they provide, but at the forefront, they're focusing on our underrepresented and under-resourced community. I also met with different leadership groups. Um, I do want to bring your direction to the English Language Learners or migrant education department. This was, um, another department I was very interested in learning about, because as you can see, even within our district, the population of our ELL students is increasing as well as our refugee students. So I wanted to know what supports they had there already, how did they feel supported by the district, what is the experience of our students, and how, how are our numbers growing? And again, how can my position advocate for these students? Outside of meeting with different groups, I also had various assessments. I started off with an all-staff survey. This slide just dictates the different questions that I asked. In this slide, this is a graph of one of the questions that I asked. It's really looking at staff's satisfaction with the district's commitment to equity and diversity. About fifty percent of staff are happy with, um, with a commitment to diversity and equity. They're satisfied with what we're doing, but this also shows that we need growth in this area. How do we increase this to maybe seventy percent, eighty percent? So some great opportunities for growth here. I'm sorry, that's actually about a little bit over sixty percent. This slide is about the fifty percent, my apologies. But this slide talks about really the satisfaction of staff when it comes to current initiatives that are going. About fifty percent understanding what's going on in the district when it comes to equity and diversity. Again, this shows that this has more growth areas. Some staff don't know what's happening in the district. Some staff kind of feel either way, and some staff are not satisfied. So how can we as an office enhance these opportunities? How can, as an office, we enhance these marketing opportunities, ensure that everyone knows what's happening and they are invested in it? And this wordle is really just to describe the key words that staff use. As you can see by the way that they have been blown up, diversity, students, and training are some of the words that staff use a couple times. And then this are just some suggestions that staff had on how we can improve in this area. As you can see, it's providing more supports, hiring more diverse staff, community outreach, training. Then I also did a, a thought exchange. As you can see, we did two reports, one for the community, one for students. We had over a hundred and fifty, seven fifty participants. And this is the community report. You have access to the community reports. I'm not gonna spend any time really clicking on this link. I want you to be able to have enough time to be able to go through it, absorb it, and reflect on the data there. But as you can see here in this wordle, uh, the community had a lot of the different things they wanted to communicate. Some, some of the community really had a focus on disabilities, families, and support. And then these are just the top five community thoughts. I'm gonna go ahead and read them for you. Teach students how to agree and disagree respectfully. Teach students how to disagree respectfully. As you can see, one and two are very similar. Actually implement anti-bullying policies. Ensure that all schools are accessible for students with disabilities, which actually reference the word cloud where disability is was one of the, the top words. And be kind, courteous, and respectful to all people. Similar to the community report, this is a student report. Um, you, you do have access to it, so, um, I hope that you're able to take some time and review the data. But as we see with this word cloud, students really are attracted to respect, food, and activities. And then here are the top five student thoughts. I will go ahead and read those. Four-day weeks. I imagine students would love that, to have one day less of school, but we know that probably wouldn't work the best in a K through twelve system. Be aware of different religious holidays and be more flexible with attendance based on those religious celebrations. Mutual respect. Have more school activities like games and dances that are actually fun and not boring. Sure, I think student voice is really important in this, and maybe they can provide some more specific examples, what that looks like. But I think it's important that students do have a voice in this process, that if we're going to be enhancing their learning environment, that they do have a say in what that looks like. And then getting groups together that have all different personalities and backgrounds together. I also had the privilege to really just engage with students directly. Um, I worked with Tony Robinson on this, this, um, idea for to meet with students, high school students. Tony is the president of the N W A C P, so we met with all the students at all the different high schools and just engaged with them, asked them about their experience in S P S, asked them how they felt about being in the buildings, did they feel supported, did they feel affirmed? Did they feel represented in what they're learning? Did they feel represented in the staff? So it was really a lot of good feedback and really important, just again, to engage the student voice. Similar to staff forums, I had the opportunity to work with Penny Rectorer, Chief Human Resources Officer, to engage staff in this, understand why did they choose to work in our district? Why have they stayed? And also get their feedback on equity and diversity. And then as I talked about with last week, with Equity and Diversity Advisory Council, when I came and provided the, the final reports, I talked about kind of what the fall looked like for me in that, um, process. I served as an observer, and then in the spring really took on the role to work with our subcommittees to flesh out those, um, recommendations. As you remember, they were, they were on for different focus areas, academic success, attendance, diverse workforce, and graduation. And really, this comes to the culmination of my listening and learning tour. It's not over, it's going to continue, but from what I learned, the people that I've met, this is what I think should, what I think should happen, next steps, recommendations. So it's my hope that as a board, you, you support the recommendation to add a fifth focus area to our strategic plan that focuses on equity and diversity. During the next couple slides, I'll be talking about what this goal looks like, the different strategies and the actions, and how we're going to achieve this work. So here is the recommended goal. I'm gonna go ahead and read it for you. Create and sustain a learning environment that supports equity and diversity through the development of staff, expanding diverse workforce, enhancing academic supports, and culturally relevant curriculum while promoting increased engagement and advocacy of underrepresented and under-resourced students. So as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, I really wanted to take an intersectional approach to this work. So when developing this goal, it was important that students were part of it, but also our staff, and looking at how do we enhance our classroom, how do we enhance, enhance the district? And so this goal is actually going to direct the work of the strategic plans as well as our actions. So here, I want to go ahead and kind of just give you directions on what these slides look like. At the top is the strategy, at the bottom is more of the timeline, and then on the next slide, you'll see the metrics. So I want to go ahead and give you a couple seconds, just to go ahead and review strategy five point one, one, one of one. So as you can see, strategy five point one point one focuses on district growth and development. In year one, we're really gonna look at professional, uh, learning and growing of all our building and district leaders. We want to ensure that we are growing them in a way that they understand and enhance their cultural consciousness. And then we're gonna look at, how do we do this? How, when will these trainings take place? Will they take quarterly? What are we gonna be focusing on? Year two is going to be then looking at, um, this type of growth for new staff that are coming into the district, that we want to ensure that we are committed to this work, so anyone that is coming into this district, this is gonna be part of their onboarding process. And we also want to develop an equity certification program, because this is a great opportunity, again, to kind of help our leaders dive deeper into this work, dive deeper into identity and self-cultural consciousness, so that this is part of the work that they do with their staff and the work that they do with their students. And the way we're gonna measure it is by the number of employees that are trained, staff, leaders, teachers, as well as our feedback. And similar to the first strategy, I'm gonna give you a couple seconds to go ahead and read it for five point one point two. As you can see with this strategy, it focuses on diverse workforce. So in year one, we're really gonna look at, um, our recruitment and retention programming and those efforts on how we can increase the number of diverse staff leaders into the district, and this will be led by a new workforce development coordinator. And with the year continuing on, we're gonna be looking at, um, different colleges, different teacher education programs, and how we're fostering those relationships so that we can share our story, share the narrative of S P S, and what we want to do, um, and really focus on our minority-serving institutions. So historically, by colleges, um, Hispanic-serving institutions, tribal colleges. Um, and then also looking at our hiring practices. If we're committed to this work, we have to ensure that this is also part of the, the application process to the interview. So how are we assessing the candidates that we're inviting to meet with, their understanding of culture consciousness, their commitment to this work? This commitment is important that we are also bringing in and building a whole community committed to the work. And updating some of our policies and looking at our H, HR website to include an equity, um, statement. And specifically with the non-discrimination policy to specifically include sexual orientation and gender identity, so that the district as a whole is welcoming, inclusive, and affirming and supportive of all our staff. And then with our metrics, it will be really just the number of programs deployed, feedback, the number of diverse hires and applicants, and then implementation of procedures. Similar to the other strategies, please take a minute to, um, review five point one point three. As you can see, strategy five point one point one three focuses on academic success and learning supports of under-resourced and underrepresented students. In year one, we're gonna be looking at our assessment tools to see what barriers they are in the buildings and what ways we can improve and enhance that for our students. And really review the services that we have for students, whether, if they're on grade level and focusing on reading and math, make sure that they really are supporting those students, they're really meeting the needs of those students, and then increasing our mentoring and coaching supports, especially for students regarding graduation. Year two is going to now then take that assessment and see if we need to create some new programs and new support programs to assist students. And if we're going to create programs, we have to ensure that they have transportation to those programs. So accessibility and mobility are gonna be a huge part of that action in year two. And then review the marketing, um, for choice programs and other academic programs. Are we really hitting our underrepresented students? Are we hitting our under-resourced students? It's one thing that we market this to the all district, because we know the choice programs are important, but our underrepresented students are under-resourced students, getting that information so that they can also participate in those programs. And then mentorship. Mentorship is huge for students within K through twelve, but I think this is a great opportunity then to engage with the community. Our community is so invested in our district, that this would be a great opportunity for us to work hand in hand with the community to mentor our students. And then metrics is again, implementation of different procedures, achievement, student achievement data, looking at graduation rates, and then the feedback of our community. I'm gonna go ahead and give you a couple seconds to review strategy five point one point four. So as you can see, strategy five point one point four focuses on the development of a culturally relevant curriculum. As you remember back to my story, had I had a culturally relevant curriculum, maybe this would have motivated me more and would have inspired me more. I always talk about Catherine Johnson from The Three Women and Hidden Figures. You know, had I had learned about women in the STEM field, had I had seen women of color really working in NASA, it may have heightened my interest and more of my confidence in math and science. It was never my favorite subject in school, but had I had the opportunity to see people that look like me achieving this and pushing their way through the barriers, maybe I would have been someone that enjoyed those subjects. So I think a culturally relevant curriculum is very important, especially for under-resourced students and underrepresented students. So in year one, it's really looking at professional learning for those who write curriculum, because if we're going to do this right, we need to make sure that our teachers and leaders who do that are trained properly. And then when expanding the curriculum, it's also important that we include Springfield cultural history. There are so many things that are happening in our community dedicated to this, that's important that it's part of our students' classrooms. Um, it's one thing to talk about these people that look like them globally, but it's another thing to talk about it locally. So there's. So there's some great things happening right now, as you can see with the Millie Project, as well as the African-American Heritage Trail. And year two is then, once we have the curriculum, how do we deploy it? It's important that we have it for all our students, from, you know, from pre-kindergarten or early childhood development center to our seniors. And so this would be available to all our students, choice programs, academic programs. And not only are they learning this, but they're also engaging with one another. How are they engaging with people that are different from them? Learning about the history of people that are different from them. And then this curriculum will also include the representation of diverse identities and the curriculum for health and human sexuality. And then go, of course, with our metrics, looking the number of teachers that are trained, the actual implemented curriculum, feedback on the new curriculum, and the student achievement data. Is now, because we have a culturally relevant curriculum, is this again going to motivate our students? Are we going to see some increases in our student achievement data? Are we going to see increases in our graduation data? To me, I believe that will happen, but it's about, again, how are we deploying it? How are we developing it? And then lastly, the last strategy. So I'm going to go ahead and give you a couple of seconds to go ahead and review that. So as you can see with recommended strategy 5.1.5, it focuses on engagement and advocacy. During the first year, it's really going to be looking at different policies and procedures that we have. One of those actions is an agnostic right equity policy. And also reviewing current positions that are focused on equity as well as engaging the community, ensuring that they are meeting the needs of the students and site leaders as well as the community. We need to review those positions and see how they're being successful. And then continuing on with year one, we're going to, it's important to me to continue to work with engaging the community and students. So I really value the time that I had with Equity and Diversity Advisory Council, and I wanted to continue. So I think engaging the community in another council so that we can share ideas, share dialogue, and also get their feedback. As a former higher ed professional, student voice is super important to me. And so I even saw this with our student forums where they really appreciated just to be at the table, that their thoughts were taken into perspective, that their stories were shared, and it was someone that understood that. So I want to continue that work to allow students to have student voice, especially as I said, if we're going to be looking at what their learning environments are, they should have a say in that. And then to review our internal and external communications. As you could see with S P S at home, we had so much different messaging and communication going out. I think it's important that it's always reflective of our top 10 languages. As we know, not everyone speaks English here in the district. There are multiple languages, and that is beautiful. And so we should ensure that our messaging is always accessible and also reflective of our diverse district. And I think also going off of that as well is also encouraging our district to also take into account different cultural holidays, different religious holidays, if there's a calendar out there to input those. One example I can think of is the upcoming holiday of Ramadan, which is a very holy and sacred holiday for the Muslim community, where a lot of them will be fasting. And I know that maybe that might be a smaller community within our district, but it's important that we understand what that looks like, especially if we're going to be having staff fast and students fast. And then in year two, it's really looking at best practices that create an inclusive, affirming, and learning environment for our students. And that's looking at our facilities. So I think a couple of examples that come to mind is the entrances. So if I'm a student with a disability that requires me to have a chair or wheelchair or clutches, sometimes our front entrances are not always accessible. And so sometimes we have to go through the back to do that. And it's really showing that, you know, we're an afterthought. Why can't you go through the front like every other student? Why do you have to always be reminded that you're different? So I think taking this universal design approach to these facilities is important. And I think even expanding that conversation to the facilities in general, do our students feel safe in there? Do they feel affirmed? Are their identities supported? Do they have access to everything? Do they have access to bathrooms and locker rooms? And then in year two, another look at a policy providing sustaining a district anti-bullying program so that students feel safe. As we know, in middle school or high school, it's sometimes the hardest years. So how do we ensure that our students are safe in their buildings, that they're safe in their learning environments? And how are we preparing our students to engage with one another? How are we preparing them for that next step? Whether, you know, they go on to college or the professional world, they have to learn how to be with people that are different with them. And then the last action is develop supports for students who transition within the district. So it's whether it's going to different buildings, for whatever reason, you're leaving your homeschool, whether it's academics or grades, or mobility for that matter, that they go to the next school and there is an action plan being developed with them, that someone is there to support them, someone's going to be training them on, someone's going to be checking in with them. I think if you leave your homeschool and you go to the next school, someone should be there to set you up for success so that you're no longer having to transition from school to school. And then again, these are just the metrics, the implementation of the different policies I mentioned, looking at the expansion of the different positions, equity, site base, and community services, feedback from members on the councils, and then culture and climate when it comes to the anti-bullying programs. And that really wraps up kind of this overview of what the focus area five will look like, the different strategies as well as the actions. So it is my hope that you will consider adding this to the strategic plan. I believe this goal will set the tone and set the pathway for the work to be done. So I think it's just important that with our commitment to equity and diversity, our strategic plan should also reflect that. So I leave it to you, the Board of Education, to consider this administrative recommendation. And the goal, I ask you to adopt the goal here. So here's the goal. I'm going to go ahead and let you take a look at it one more time before we move on to questions. And I'll go ahead and open up the floor for any questions or comments.
Are there any questions for or comments for Ivanya this evening? If you want to raise your hand, I will be looking for you. We've got Jerry Lee waving to us. There we go, unmuting himself, there we go.
There we go. Just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Yvonne, you must live in a different day than we do. You must have 28 or 30 hours in your day and eight days a week. This is a lot of stuff for you. And I know it's not just on your shoulders. This is a district-wide effort and a culture and a DNA thing. So I think this is a very, very exciting plan and very comprehensive. It's a lot. And I really think, one comment is, as we put this in as a board strategy in our strategic plan, it's on our shoulders now to make sure you got the resources to do this. I mean, we can talk it, but we got to walk it. And that means the board's got to step up from budgeting, from allocations, from whatever those resources need to be, that that's now on, I mean, you've kind of put it in our table, which is exactly where it needs to be for us as a board to run with. And I mean, you're going to run with it, but we're going to have, we're going to be behind you, pushing you and encouraging you and all that. But got to give you the resources to make that happen. So I'm very impressed with your plan, and you got a lot in here. There's a lot to do, and it's going to be great to get this done. Two questions I had, and they're kind of maybe digging into weeds a little bit. But on the staff survey that you did, the seven or 800 responses that you got back.
It was about, yes.
Pardon?
It was over 500 instructional staff that participated in this.
I tried to add them up really fast, but I didn't have any to work. I tried to add them up.
Sure.
Is that data, and this is something that I don't necessarily want to see or need to see or anything, but can you disaggregate those responses from the standpoint of, we all come from a different perspective? And what I had, my perspective is, hey, everything's fine from my little world.
Sure.
But that's not reality. And so I don't, I'm not sure that that's something I want to see as a board, anything like.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you as the Equity and Diversity Office, you have that kind of data behind you to know, because that looks really, really good, but is that consistent with the reality of what's going on in the district? That's more rhetorical question, Yvonne. I don't know that I'm expecting an answer, it's just something to think about as we look at that. I don't want to put you on the spot, that wasn't my intent, but.
That's fine, and I'd be happy to at least give some insight into that. But I would say our staff are happy with the direction that we're going in. I think people are happy about the trainings, I think they're happy about the position, I think they're happy about the opportunities that are there. Sure, there are areas of improvement, but what I saw in the data is that there is hope. And I think hope is very important when it comes to this conversation. People have not given up, have hope in the district, are invested. So yes, there is hope, and I think like anything else, there's always room to grow.
Oh, absolutely. And we got to start. If we don't start the snowball with the little ball going down the hill, it's never going to grow. And so we've got to push that. The second one is maybe a little more detail, and it's more a comment than that. Maybe on your strategy two metrics, one of the metrics said, impact of programs deployed. Can you, yeah, it's 5.12. Yeah, everything, all your other metrics you had were pretty easily accountable and do that. The impact of programs deployed, how would you do that? How would you determine the impact and measure that? That was my biggest question was that, how do you measure that?
I think it's really looking at, kind of just when it comes to recruitment, what else are we doing? It's one thing to go and try to recruit as many diverse people, but what are the other efforts? How are we looking within our own district? Are there going to be set of programs? Are we going to then survey folks in there? Are we going to then look at when we hire diverse staff, getting their, you know, seeing how we're retaining them? So there's going to be different ways, there's different programs, what we're thinking of doing. And we weren't very specific when, I wasn't very specific when I was doing this because I want to ensure that there's fluidity when it comes to this work, because the work is always changing, right? The needs are always changing. So the impact of those programs will be assessed by, again, just looking at our numbers, seeing satisfaction in people, and seeing how we're retaining them.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of impact. I really think that's a good thing. I just don't know how, how do I know when I've accomplished it and I've got there? That's the, and that's not critical, that's just, you know, I would love to measure that and be able to say, hey, bam, one, two, three, four, five, this is what's visible and what is tangible, and we can go with it. But bottom line, I would say the bottom line is, the plan's really, really good. I'm impressed with that. I know you spent a lot of time and effort with EDAC and putting this together, and good luck.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I'm sure with my many of your reports, I'll be presenting to you all, there will be, you know, information there on how it's being achieved and how it's being measured. But I wanted to go back and thank you again, because this work was not done by myself. I'm not an island. I worked with the community, I worked with different people in my tour, I worked with the leadership here to get their feedback, to get their support. So yes, this is the recommendation I'm making, but it is part of the administration. So I just want to make sure that this is not just Yvonne is doing this and Yvonne is doing that, it's accountable to Yvonne, but it's accountable to the district and our leadership. And then I'm very happy about the support that's been given to that.
Thank you, Ivanya, and thank you, Jerry, for your comments and questions. Who else has comments and questions for Ivanya at this time?
I've got a comment and then a question. Ivanya, I think I would second what Jerry had to say in terms of the breadth of this. And I think your last comment is really noteworthy, is that though you are speaking the plan, you're actually channeling a number of voices in the community. You are sort of summoning a lot of data from a lot of different perspectives. And two of the things that strike me as really, really crucial here, one of them relates to the nature of this board and this district. And that is that we tend to be focused like a laser on our good days, and we have more good than bad, I believe. We're focused like a laser on our strategic plan. And adding an additional focus area to that strategic plan holds us accountable for doing this important work. And so I think that's key, and I'm glad that will show up on our agenda in May. And I'm hopeful that we can, we can take affirmative action relatively soon thereafter. The second thing, and I really applaud your one of the areas. Equity, because those are the broad level issues and statements of principle to which we commit. And having committed to those.
Charles, we, Charles, we had your last few words just cut out, the last few sentences. Can you make that statement again for us?
Yeah. Yeah, the first observation I would make about sort of priority here beyond the necessity of holding us accountable is that we are, as a board on our good days, we tend to be focused like a laser on the strategic plan. So in order for us to move forward in the way that we know that we're accountable to you, to the district, to every student, to every staff member, to every member of this community, is that it has to be part of our strategic plan. Otherwise, it becomes just something else that might be nice to do. It is no longer arguable that we have to make progress when it comes to strategic plan. I think the next issue is, I think it's really crucial, is that revision to the non-discrimination statement and the statement of equity and diversity or equity and inclusion. Because that in some ways translates the broad, translates the broad strategic claim that we put in the strategic plan, and it becomes a statement of principle. And I think this is a principal board and a principal district, and I think we need to hold ourselves accountable for it. So I applaud you. I know there's some challenging conversations ahead, but I look forward to supporting you as you engage in them and then as we engage, engage in them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles, and thank you for repeating. We're all doing the best we can virtually, so we didn't want to miss your comment, so thank you for that. Anybody else with comments or questions? If you'll raise your hand, I'll be able to see you. We've got Sharita raising her hand.
I need to chime in, because this work that you're doing, Ivanya, means so much to me personally. But I think that I echo what Charles and Jerry have already said. And you know that I've spoken to you previously about the scope of this and my fears and concerns about the scope. However, I think I have watched you throughout the community, and I know that you have taken in the voices of so many people. And I can see it represented here in your report. And I applaud you on that, because there's a lot of voices that are represented here. And but again, I am concerned about the scope. And I also want to echo Jerry's point about measurement, because everyone's going to be held accountable to your strategies and your metrics. And I do have some concern a little bit about the word implement without further clarification, just because it's hard to measure that. But kudos to you, because this is a lot. And I stand with you in making, hoping that we can support you and the district in making sure that this gets done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharita. Anybody else with comments or questions? I have a few, I've got Denise raising her hand, there we go, Denise.
Thank you. Just back to your surveys, Ivanya. The Listening and Learning All Staff Survey, you have 586 responses. I'm a little unclear, you could probably help me with this. On your Likert scale, you're one, two, three, four, five. So tell me what the one, two, three, four, five is that disagree, or I mean, what does that start out with?
Five is the highest, extremely agree, and one is extremely disagree.
Okay, so based on this, we have about, what, 62% of our staff?
Over 60%, yes.
62 either agree or strongly agree that they rate that they are satisfied with our commitment at this point.
Yes.
Did that surprise you?
No, it was very affirming to see that. As you know, my background is in higher ed, and so really what I saw from the district was things that related to the university and whatnot. So it was really good to come in, because this was one of the first things that I did when I came into position. I just wanted to know, what did staff think? I just wanted to know what did staff think about the, you know, the district's commitment? So it was great. It's great to see about a little bit more than half, about, you know, 60% enjoying or for it. But it also shows how are we reaching the other 40%? How do we engage them? How do we get them to invest in this?
Right, and you had some, some there with a, and was 3, just no opinion?
Kind of a neutral, neutral.
Just kind of a neutral. Okay, so there's some good place to work. And then on the next graph, it was a 0 to 5 Likert scale. So what did that represent?
There was, they did not have any idea what's happening in the district.
Okay.
Or at least any idea of these current initiatives.
Okay, and then your disagree started with 1.
Yes.
Strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, and then on up.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then were you surprised with that one?
I was when people with at least a little bit over 12% that didn't know the initiatives that were happening. So that made me ask a couple of questions to myself and the team and just people around to see how is this information given to people within this, and then the district? How is it communicated to the community? How do our students learn about it? So I learned the ways of just like, a lot of this is going through Equity Champions, a lot of this is going through leadership in the district. So yeah, I was, I'm hoping that number will then decrease, right? So that people will then see, or marketing ourselves efficiently, we're having these conversations of why these initiatives are important. So I was a little bit surprised, but it was brand new, so I was taking it all in.
Yeah, and this, this one to me is interesting because had, I think we've done a survey with the EDAC, the Equity and Diversity Advisory Council, when it first met in terms of, of just the aspect of what do you know about the current initiatives regarding diversity, equity, inclusion? That, this would have been a very interesting survey because I think that not applicable would have been very high with that group as opposed to then when some of the things that's going on was revealed. So I think if we did this survey with that group, then toward the end, that would change. And then what we're all hoping for then is as time goes on, that changes even more.
Sure. Thank you, Denise. Any other comments or questions, Denise? Anybody else with comments or questions? I don't see any. I'll make a couple of comments before we move us on. First, Ivanya, thank you. This is a very thorough overview of your recommendations, and I just want to say that I love hearing your story. I, I just can imagine that your family must be so proud of you for the courage that you have. And I, I see and I hear how education has been a powerful tool as part of your story, and all of our stories matter. So you integrating that into your presentation tonight is, it's powerful to me. I had goosebumps and I'm actually sweating, so it, it meant something to me. I also am thrilled to see that you took time in your listening tour to go talk to peer chief diversity officers. I think that's great. And then I appreciate your thoroughness with the context of, of connecting with our partners as well as all the different people groups. I think that that's fantastic. It really helps you as a leader inform your recommendations and your decisions and those type of things. And I'm so glad, so, so, so glad that you took time to meet with our SPS students and our SPS teachers and staff. I think that's very powerful to hear from those direct sources regarding the, the people who we really want to listen to as well. So I think that that was, it really informed your data to be able to make stronger recommendations. So thank you for that. I do want to remind, I don't have any questions in particular right now, Ivanya. You've given us a lot, as I'm sure some of our other board members, you've given us a lot to review. You've given us a lot to think about. This is our first time to hear from you and to take all this information in. And I just want to remind the board that we will review the suggested goal at our May school board meeting. And at that time, we can have discussion and we can take a vote to regarding the, the goal number five that is being recommended. As you probably recall, board members, we do not approve the strategy or the bullet points and, and action item. That is what the administration recommends to meet the goal that we approve. Any items in those sections that maybe you've seen tonight, any of those that are needed for our attention related to policy or approval of curriculum or those type of things, those will be brought forward to us as a board when that is appropriate for our review. Of course, our input is always welcomed by administration. So Denise and I, as your board officers, will be reaching up, reaching out to you to see if you have any input that you want us to bring forward to administration after you've had some time to process this information tonight and hear from Ivanya. Any other comments or questions before we move forward?
I would just offer a couple, if you don't mind.
Yes.
And I was, as well as the board, want to thank Ivanya for the work. It's been a pleasure adding her to our team. It was a commitment of this board and of this administration to raise the level of expectation on equity and diversity. The first step was bringing a partner and a leader to head that charge, and she's doing that in great ways. And as you notice, representing a ton of voices, not just her own. And she really does her homework and builds this plan. But the next work is the expansion of the strategic plan. We want to elevate the work. We know what the other areas of the strategic plan have pointed us towards is that we have gaps in performance. We have gaps in achievement. And while we desire to get those things closed, we know that it's going to take very specific strategies and actions and accountability. And we want that accountability from the community, from the board. And I think this board wants it also because it's what's best for our whole student population. So as you process this tonight, what Alina just said, we want to hear back from you. The goal is yours to adopt. The strategies and actions live within the administration, but we really want your feedback on those, especially when we talk about prioritization. You guys talked about the comprehensiveness of the plan, and we wanted to put out that there's a lot to do. But there's progress that's already been happening. We really committed to an expansion in training this year, and there are things to celebrate. We've already committed to a workforce coordinator of the FTE that you had approved last year that we had been holding and waiting until we saw what the prioritization was going to come out and the recommendation. So that position is posted, and we're working to hire that right now. But if you have other feedback regarding prioritization, we want to hear that. I know that will help us really drive forward in some of our actions and strategies because we want to go deep in the work. We don't want this to be an inch deep and a mile wide. We know that we're going to have to go deep, and that's how we're going to impact all of our students in this community. So thanks for listening tonight. Thanks to Ivanya for leading this charge, and we look forward to putting this goal before you in May.
Thank you, John, for your comments. Thank you, Ivanya.
Thank you to the board.
Ivanya is the first chief who's had to present hers virtually, so I applaud that. You did a great job. You did a great job.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Moving us forward, our next agenda item is 7.01, which is board policy adoption and revisions. We do have a recommended action, and John, do you want to add any comment before we move forward with that?
No, we put these before you last week, and no changes or additional questions were asked by the board.
Okay, all right. And I should also comment that we have Jill who has joined us now, so I will include her on the roll boat. Whether or not you can or can't see her, I'm not sure, but I do know that she has joined us here. So the recommended action is that the board adopt all policies as presented.
So moved.
Charles with the first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for, with Bruce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll for vote. Denise.
Make sure you unmute, Denise.
Aye.
Aye, okay, for Denise, aye for Denise. Jerry.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Sharita. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Our next agenda item is 8.0, which is new business. And that includes our MSBA delegate assembly. And just as a reminder, for our board, this past year, Charles has been our representative on the MSBA board, and he has agreed to continue to serve on that. So we appreciate that, Charles. And we also, I know you may make some comments at the end during board comments about giving us some highlights of, of a recent meeting that you've been a part of. Denise and I will also serve as delegates. We were delegates last year as well, and we are willing to serve in that capacity again. We don't have to vote on this per se. We're just giving an informational report and giving you a briefing on that. If anyone is interested, we do, we will need one alternate as a delegate in case Charles, Denise, or I are not able to attend those meetings. So we, Denise and I as board officers will reach out to you to see if anybody else is interested in serving as an alternate, and we will make that announcement moving forward. Our next, moving us to our next item of business is 9.0. And that is, actually, it's 9.01. That is our petition to vacate the alley adjacent to Jarrett Middle School. I will go ahead and read the motion. We had Carol who presented that to us last time, and then we can see if there's any discussion. The recommended action is that the board approves the district to consent to the vacation of the alley adjacent to the existing Jarrett Middle School at 840 South Jefferson, Springfield, Missouri. And the board president is authorized and directed to execute the petition and consent to vacate the alley and for the same to be submitted to the city of Springfield. That is our motion. Do I have someone willing to make the, the first motion?
So moved.
I will make that motion, but I think Jill beat me.
I think Jill beat you. So Jill, you can have the first. Denise, would you like to second that?
Yes.
Okay, Jill will second that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Denise.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Sharita.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Our next unfinished business item is 9.02, nutritional services, groceries, and supplies bid renewal. Our recommended action is that the board approve the annual, and I should back up. As you know, all of these under unfinished business that we're quickly moving through, Carol presented that to us at our last board meeting. So the recommended action is that the board approve the annual groceries and supplies bid for the 2020-21 school year as presented. Do I have?
So moved.
Charles with the first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry with the second. Thank you, Jerry and Charles. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Denise.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Sharita. Chair votes aye, motion passes. The next agenda item is 9.03, nutritional services, milk, juice, and ice cream bid renewal. Ice cream sounds good right now, doesn't it? The recommended action is that the board approve the annual milk, juice, and ice cream bid for the 2020-21 school year as presented. Would someone be willing to make the first motion?
I'll make that motion.
Denise, a second?
Second.
Jill with the second. Thank you, Denise and Jill. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Denise.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Sharita.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Next item of business is unfinished business 9.04, Bisset Elementary HVAC. The recommended action is that the board approves the bid to replace the HVAC system, system at Bisset Elementary from multi-craft tractors as presented. I'll hear the, someone willing to give that a first motion.
So moved.
Charles, a second?
I'll second.
Denise will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll again. Denise.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Sharita.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Our next item of business, we're going to call Carol up as she has a few items to add to the 9.05 student device replacement before we read that recommended action.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. So just in time delivery, this, late this afternoon, we did update the agenda item. And should note for you, you have a little feedback going on, that the final bid pricing resulted in a recommendation that the tech related to Clayton Holdings LLC as the lowest responsive bidder. That places our payment structure just a little lower than we originally projected for you. Interest rates for, for the five separate bids came in between 1.38% to 2.91%. And Clayton Holdings, which is a division of Commerce Bank, was the lowest bidder. So the updated payment amount will be annually for three years, $934,964.80. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Carol right now before we read the motion? Okay, all right. I, I don't see any right now, so thank you, Carol, for that. The recommended action is that the board approve the attached resolution authorizing and executing and delivery of estate and municipal lease purchase agreement with Clayton Holding LLC as lesser for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain technology equipment authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith and authorizing all other actions related to the equipment, lease, purchase, financing contemplated by this resolution. There you go, folks. Do I have some? Okay, I've got Jerry with the first. I'll, Jill, are you comfortable with the second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Denise.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
Sharita. Sharita, if you'll unmute yourself.
Aye.
Aye, I could see the, the, I could see it happening. And chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. And our next item of business is unfinished business 9.06, budget development. And Carol, you're with us a couple more times tonight.
Yes. Click here, no. There we go. I'm, I have, I have an assistant beside me. How about that, right there? See that?
New tab for you first.
Okay. Thank you.
Go back to the zoom.
Okay, off we go. Okay, thank you. Getting it on the screen may actually have taken longer than the actual presentation. So this evening will be yet another one of our budget presentations to help us re-center on each of our funds that we deal with. And as you know, we are this evening referencing the Capital Projects Fund. Following this meeting, we will move to the General Teachers Funds for the May 19th presentation. This shows you the funds and how they are distributed. And as you can see, the Capital Projects Fund is a tiny little sliver. This year, it is at 5% of our overall regular fund balance, and that's not part of the operating funds. Let me back up to that. So just for all of our separate funds that we manage, it's 5%. And the, the sources for the Capital Projects Fund, as always, we have that fund balance carryover that occurs. But we also have opportunity in the state of Missouri to do what is called a a transfer from the operating account. And this is an amount that is based on a guaranteed tax-based calculation. There's a report that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education posts each year that specifically provides for each school district how much that transfer amount may be. And so for the current year, we're estimated at eleven point four million dollars, but that's the cap. We don't have to transfer that much over to the Capital Projects Fund, but that's the amount that we would be limited to. Other allowable transfers can include if, for instance, there is a grant or special funding source that is specifically to support a purchase that must be coded to the Capital Projects Fund, then we're allowed to directly transfer that money into that area. And also, certain types of revenues may be directly receipted into the Capital Projects Fund. Some school districts choose to set a levy in their Capital Projects Fund, and we do not do that in Springfield Public Schools, and it's actually quite rare throughout the state of Missouri. So the types of expenditures that host to Fund Four or the Capital Projects Fund would include furniture and equipment, and each item would be three thousand or more, or there would be a group of assets purchased. For instance, if we were to buy all classroom furniture for a building, that would be required to be coded to the Capital Projects Fund. We're also required to have our lease purchase payments, so principal and interest is coded there, as is any major building improvement or land purchases, that type of work. That is all reported within the Capital Projects Fund. And I should note that the state of Missouri reporting structure requires that the Capital Projects Fund and bond funds are combined. So when we talk about the annual secretary of the board report or the annual financial report that is provided to you at the same time that the state, the regular audit is provided to you, the financial audit for the district, that is reported within that fund structure. This shows you a chart of our historical expenditures in the district for capital projects. And as you can see, there are a couple of notes at the bottom of that chart that reference some differences relative to general ledger versus what's posted here, and that's simply because they're anomalies. For instance, in FY fifteen, there was a facility that was purchased, the transportation facility, that was coded out of regular capital of two point nine million. And then in FY seventeen, we had significant lease payoffs occur. So, so that it would not distract from the actual investment in our facilities and equipment, those amounts have been pulled out. I'm also highlighting for you that FY nineteen, it is a significant, significantly higher amount at twelve point seven million. It does include two point two million in safety purchases. You'll recall as part of the budget adoption that that included some safety improvements within there. But you can see that over time, we have continued to provide a more appropriate level of investments into our Capital Projects Fund. As a reminder, we have over four million square feet of buildings, and there were many years when decisions had to be made because there simply weren't resources. It's not surprising for us to see that in FY oh nine and FY ten, that only one point three million dollars was invested to support capital needs. And that would have been at the time of what is now referred to as the Great Recession. So naturally, capital is oftentimes some of the first to change, be changed, so that we can continue to support our people and continue our regular programming for kids. So as we go through the process of identifying needs in the system, we are doing the same thing we've done for a few years now, and that is that our leaders in our buildings and in our departments identify the needs, that they, they know best what the needs are for the kids and what it takes to support the work of their teams. And our operations team works to provide some cost estimations. And then our instructional and operational leaders collaborate together and review all the requests to ensure that it is not only aligning to the needs of our students, but the comprehensive request is reflective of our district-wide needs as well. This shows you the spending cycle, and I highlight this each year for you because as we journey forward in closing out the year and then opening the new year, we oftentimes see that there can be a significant budget amendment that occurs in the first few months of the new fiscal year, and that's simply because some projects just can't be completed in the current year. I know that Dr. Sean, his team of operations leaders have worked very hard to deliver on the projects that are in the queue currently, and they're not anticipating as much of a change over fiscal year this time. We also have this opportunity right now where we don't have kids in buildings, so we're able to get in and do work that we might not otherwise have been able to do because we certainly want to honor our instructional importance of not disrupting instruction. And so sometimes that delays some of the work. But oftentimes, the projects will roll over a three-year span of time. We do continue also to use that capital forecast software that supports our lifecycle replacements, so the team keeps that information up to date so that we have real-time inventory information. It provides us with some costing information as well, and it definitely provides us with the ability to do better long-term planning in terms of our overall trajectory on our capital needs. So now we're entering into slides that represent our current proposed purchases for the year. This is how this information was provided to you last year as well. We know, again, because of the interesting time that we're in, we may need to continue to make some adjustments to the capital recommendation at this time, and all of that will become more clear as we journey toward the end of the year. But for the time being, we are allocating an amount of a million sixty-five thousand for buses and engines, and that is to maintain our fleet and ensure that we are at an average age of nine years for the entire fleet and a maximum bus age of sixteen years. Cafeteria tables, equipment, and furniture, there's just under, well, just over nine hundred thousand dollars. And we do have a rotation for cafeteria tables, and then other needs are identified to support programming for students. For electrical and interior, we have a hundred and ninety-two thousand plus, and that, and we've included for you some of the specific work that would take place, such as the bathroom renovation at Watkins, we've got some fire alarm panels, and then some panels to support the music program at Pleasant View. The exterior and grounds work is just over eight hundred thousand, and you can see there that that would address areas, not only parking lots, but curbing and sidewalks, also some window repairs at McGregor Playground, ramps at Disney, and some repairs at Carver as well. And the parking lot, we provide an allocation each year to support parking lots, ceiling and striping of around two hundred thousand dollars. For flooring, we do another allocation. Each, we provide a two hundred thousand dollar placeholder, and so what, I want you to understand about those placeholders for roofing or parking or flooring, that there's a prioritization process that takes place for each of those separate categories. So it's not only relative to the age, but our teams go in and do an inspection to see, can we get any additional life out of whatever that product might be? For gyms and fields, we are showing an allocation just under one point five million dollars, and as you can see, we've included the priorities that have been identified, and this is in collaboration with our Director of Athletics, Josh Scott, turf replacement at Glendale High School, the main gym bleacher replacement at Kickapoo and Parkview, main gym floor refinishing, and also some fencing separation that needs to occur. For heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, we have a one point three three zero allocation, and there are some primary jobs that need to take place. To give you an example, the HVAC total replacement at Bisset will cost approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. For the technology work, we have an allocation currently of one million three sixty-five, and that includes, as you can see here, the annual costs that are necessary to support technology throughout our district, and there's a lot that goes into that. We also have equipment to support our business continuity plan. So the work that was done for that and presented to you last year, we do have some backup equipment that is necessary. The lease cost, now this has not been updated to show that new lease payment that you just approved, and our estimate is slightly higher by around fourteen thousand six hundred dollars higher than where that's actually landing. And this shows you the changes to our lease listed on this screen. The grand total of the lease payments for the year would be two point seven million Nutrition services, each year we provide an allocation as a placeholder, and we rely upon our Director of Nutrition Services to prioritize and identify the equipment that needs to be replaced throughout our district. We do have our own team that focuses on preventative maintenance and continuing to do repairs on some of that equipment as well. But to give you context, a new dishwasher could cost anywhere between fifteen to thirty thousand dollars. Thankfully, that's not what we pay for those in our homes, but you can imagine they're, they're much different. A steamer, for instance, is around sixteen thousand dollars, and a walk-in freezer can be, a cooler freezer could be between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. We annually provide a playground allocation, and again, there's a prioritized list that is supported with the allocation provided. And up for renewal would be the Mark Twain Elementary Playground to receive equipment that is ADA compatible and provides for accessibility and inclusion. We also have other playground needs throughout the district, and those are addressed as well. The allocation for roofs is one point five million dollars, and you can see the sites that have been listed there. And again, this budgetary placeholder helps us address roofs that are twenty years, or older than twenty years, rather. And again, special testing is done to ensure that the roofs really do need to be repaired in the event we might be able to get another year or two life out of them. Tuck pointing, just under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this work. And again, to provide you context, the tuck pointing work that needs to take place at Studio Alternative Center is just under a hundred and forty thousand dollars. White fleet vehicles, we are continuing to work on a replacement process for those. Our vehicles are covering a hundred and thirty-eight square miles, fifty-seven buildings. These are the vehicles that are used by our maintenance team and other employees throughout the district, also includes our school police vehicles to support that work in assisting our leaders with student needs. And last year, we had a five hundred thousand dollar allocation. This year, believe, we believe we can manage that with four hundred thousand dollars. So all of those lead to this overall estimate. At this time, our current year estimate, rather, is that we would end the year with nearly sixteen million dollars in the account. And I will show you, this is a summary of all those data points that I just provided you with regard to the needs throughout the system, and those total twelve million nine eighty-two eight sixty-nine at this point in time. Again, we'll be adjusting that lease amount, but as you can see, it adds up quickly for us. And this slide shows you the estimated fund balance transition that would occur. So again, if we would end the year, in the current year with just under sixteen million dollars, we have direct receeding revenue of about one point seven five oh currently, and the expenditure is just under thirteen million. We're estimating for FY twenty-one, a transfer from the operating fund of eight million dollars to sustain the needs within that fund. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Carol. Are there any questions or comments for Carol at this point? Hearing none. Carol, thank you so much for your presentation. I think you're going to stay.
I am.
Right where you're at because we're going to move on to agenda item, bond project updates and actions at this point. Boning a friend, huh?
I did. I'm quoting my. Thank you. Am I good? Okay, so the first item is the, yes, the change orders and agreements. And again, our practice is to provide you not only the specific information that we are seeking approval for, but also to provide you context with regard to the impact on the overall budget available. So as noted, there are furniture, fixture, and equipment expenditures identified for Sunshine Delaware and Fulbright, and the available budget is noted as well for you. So all of this is within our budget allocation. Then Delaware, there's a total construction credit of two thousand fifty-one dollars. For Package Four, total construction addition, eight thousand five sixty-six oh eight. And for that particular one on Package Four, that's relative to one of the secure entrances, the work there, that does not have a contingency available, but overall, we have significant contingency, contingency to provide for funding for these.
Are there any questions for Carol before we move on to our recommended action? Okay, I don't see any at this time, Carol. We will go ahead and vote, or we will go ahead and call for the recommended action of ten point oh one. The recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented.
So moved.
Jill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Denise, thank you for the second. And then any discussion at this point? Hearing none, I will call for the roll. Denise?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Carol, you may want to speak to us about ten point oh two, Williams Elementary demolition bid.
I would be happy to. So as a reminder, the architect for this project is Sat Paragon, and the construction manager is Nab Holtz. We did receive two bids for the Williams Elementary demolition work. The recommended contractor is Gurkin, and the guaranteed maximum price is four seventy-one oh seventy-three.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for Carol before we move forward? Okay, seeing none, the recommended action is that the board approve the demolition contract as presented.
So moved.
Charles, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Bruce, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move forward and call the roll. Denise?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you so much, Carol. Our next agenda item is eleven point oh one, our report from administration. So I'll turn that over to you, John.
Thank you very much, and I will, I know you just got a report last week, so this one will be a little more brief, but there are some things that continue to change. So bring up speed, and I'll cover for all of the chief and deputy positions since we're on a limited ability to share tonight. But just in big picture, we're one month away from the end of school, April twenty-one, May twenty-one will be when we wrap it up, and we look forward to continuing to serve our kids the same way we have for the last month. And our, I do believe our faculty and staff continue to offer both great learning opportunities as well as support structures for mental health access, to food service access, to technology access that's been distributed now across the district, so proud of the work that is going on. As we all know, we would much rather be in our school facilities face-to-face with our students, but we're making the best of a bad situation. So that continues, that work continues. We did go ahead and proceed with an official announcement, as you know, regarding graduation. Our plan is to have those ceremonies in August as well as other end-of-year ceremonies to make sure that our seniors are recognized appropriately. Prom, project graduation, all of the things they've been looking forward to and working towards. We know we're three months away, but we are very hopeful for a different world at that time, or at least different scenarios where we can get together in an official capacity and deliver diplomas and have other recognition. So stay tuned. The dates have been announced. I hope you put them on your calendar, and we'll keep you updated as we proceed. We also noted that we have made the decision to flip the first session of Explore to fully virtual at this point, so the June learning session will be Explore to Go. We hope students will continue to learn with us wherever they are, as they are today. We are trying to, you know, as well as I do, especially at the K-five level, Explore truly was that. It had standards learning, but really embedded into a community experience. But if you go out to the Explore website, you will see that we haven't lost the experience. We're just going to have to deliver it in a different way. So still trying to get, obviously, at the curriculum and the standards that we desire our students to experience, but through an exciting, exciting way to experience, whether that be the Olympics or natural parks and those kind of things through a virtual platform. be the Olympics or natural parks and those kind of things, through a virtual platform. So our curriculum team and instructional team is working hard to make sure that learning opportunities continue and exploration happens virtually through June. We'll make a decision on the July session. We are committed to continuing learning in July. Obviously, our hope is that there is some way that we can physically be back together in some settings in July. We don't know that that's the case yet, but we'll hold off our announcement for what learning will look like for July until late May or early June. So we'll be ready to flip the switch one way or another. Additionally, we are still on target. I know there's been some statewide conversations around adjustments of start dates, and we've had parents call around that. Our calendar is the same calendar that we've adopted. We would not change that without coming to you, because it's a board adopted calendar. So August 24th is when we will get the next year kicked off, unless we come back to you for some kind of modification that's necessary. We don't anticipate it at this point. But August 24th is what we're shooting for. We're continued committed to serve also food service during the summer. The current DESI waiver allows us to expand, or do grab and go breakfast and lunch through June 30. And we will continue to make that available. We do expect that waiver to be recommended to go through the July and August months also. But we'll have to wait for the department to give us authority to do so. But right now, we will continue to serve. The model may look a little different, just like we always change our model a little bit in summer, just like our learning model will shift a little in summer. But we will have meals available for our students in the summer, in the month of June, and we'll communicate to them soon. A few other things, Hall of Fame nominations are open right now. So if you want to get onto our website and access that, we are looking for people to recognize next year, opportunities to celebrate some of our most distinguished alumni. Last night, as you all know, probably had on your calendar, would have been Teacher Appreciation Banquet. And while we did not get the opportunity to do that, our foundation and other corporate partners are committed to recognizing our teachers as we start the school year next year. So I'm hoping you all have that already on your calendar for August, and we will look forward to making that happen. We are proceeding with the Teacher of the Year process, and you've probably seen those finalists already presented. And a Teacher of the Year will be named soon. So we're continuing to highlight the great work of our faculty and celebrate that wish we could have been together last night. It's always one of our favorite nights of the year to have staff from all across the district together. In addition, just want you to know that the work of training and supporting our teachers continues to happen. Vonnius Department is continuing to offer equity training to support our equity champions, as well as making individual building and site calls to leaders and counselors and nurses and those that are engaging with our kids on a regular basis to see what equity gaps exist and how we can connect our kids to both our resources and community resources to help fill gaps. We know that those will continue to happen for our families and for our students. And the only way we know about it is to continue to connect and ask. So that has taken place in lots of different ways. Outside of just kind of the system announcements, you've also seen some statewide announcements that are pertinent to education in the last 48 hours regarding withholds of finances. Probably not a shock that this is going to be a common part of our conversation, that the governor has to have a balanced budget by the end of the year. It's how Missouri works. It is, I think, a good part of our structure, but it also requires some actions as we close up the months. We know there was one set of withholdings that really hit higher education earlier. The second withhold, the total was around $50 million, but $15 million came towards the formula through the supplemental budget, and another $7 million came to transportation, as well as a few little small items. So the impact for SPS, just to get a full picture, is the supplement, and this is kind of a technical process. The supplement helps correct for the prior year adjustment to the state adequacy target that happens basically when the state trues up the budget in November and goes live on the actual enrollment, because districts estimate their enrollment for the previous year. So when that happens, what happens typically is there's a reduction to all districts because more enrollment came in than what they allocated for, so they have to take a reduction out of the current year number. So DESI asked for a supplement to go back and bring everybody back up to whole for the previous year. That supplement was $16 million. It would have been $400,000 for us. The legislature, House and Senate passed that supplement. This is probably the fastest money I've ever seen approved and then removed, right? So I think the governor actually approved the supplemental budget, but then had to go ahead and immediately do withholdings, because it doesn't look like state revenue will support that supplement to come out. So it was approved, but then it was withheld. So $400,000 impact for SPS. The transportation line is a little over $100,000 in actual reductions that we'll see within this current year. So while they are certainly not things we want to see, they are not large at this point. I think the bigger concern remains in our Prop C revenue that is impossible to protect, project right now. It is a statewide sales tax. And as you can imagine, statewide sales tax is decreasing significantly. Also Classroom Trust Fund, which is a budget or line item that helps support the formula, is primarily supported by gaming revenues. And with casinos shut down across the state, you can imagine that those revenues are gone at this point. So yet to be determined what the May-June payments look like. DESI provided an update today, and basically they told us, we can't tell you much right now. So we've got to see how this revenue comes in over the next couple months. We, once again, think that this year's budget will remain fairly whole, but next year's budget is the big question mark. And that will lead me to just shifting to legislative updates. This is a little bit overlapping, Alina, if that's okay. Legislative session will go back live April 27th, is what we've been told. At this point, it does appear that they are going to focus on budget. We have heard lots of rumors about maybe a June session or coming back in the summer to work on that. That may still continue to happen, but they are appearing to come forward with the expectation of getting back to work on the budget and trying to pass the constitutionally required budget by May 8. We don't know any idea what that will look like. So we will certainly be engaged in the legislative process, listening next week and offering input. I would tell you to stay tuned to MSBA and your association regarding feedback that we need to provide. We do know that stimulus dollars will help fill some gaps, but we're not sure where those will go at this point and which buckets or which gaps they will help fill most currently for both this year and next year. So a lot of waiting game on the budget. I think that covers really the admin reports, as well as the legislative updates that I'm aware of right now.
Okay, thank you, John, for that overview. I'm going to move us on in our agenda then. Our next agenda item is 12.01, which is Board Comments. Are there any board members? I know John and I have a couple things that have come forward to the board, and we'll go over that in just a moment. But are there any board comments at this time?
Madam President, if I could, as Springfield's representative to the MSBA Board of Directors, just a quick report. We had a virtual meeting on Friday afternoon, and as Jerry commented, there were about eight or 10 hours worth of material. We got it into four hours. And it was, it was full, but it was very, very productive. So just a couple of quick comments. And I would observe at the top that, like many organizations, when the COVID-19 pandemic sort of broke, and there was clearly going to be a profound impact on public education, MSBA made all of their resources available to every district in the state, regardless of whether they were actually members of MSBA, which is not unlike, I think, for example, the News Leader made its COVID-19 related coverage free, right? And I think that speaks volumes about MSBA's commitment to the greater good of public school kids in the state of Missouri. Interestingly enough, the open rate on emails, and they track these things, to non-members was at least as high as the open rate as it was for members, right? So I think they may have been particularly thirsty for MSBA support at that time. I think one of the important things to note is that MSBA will be developing a task force to, as almost every other sector of our community will have to be, to reflect on and learn from 2020. Not simply the COVID-19 pandemic, but certainly that's the key driver here with four working groups, the homework gap, which is focused on equity, integrated health needs, sort of that integrating social and emotional support, academic and governance lessons learned. And I think that will be particularly important for school boards. And then emergency operations plans. And I know Jerry can particularly speak about that, given his role in school safety, et cetera. And as regards governance lessons, Melissa Randall, the Executive Director, who does a superb job, I think, she reinforced the centrality of engaged, but not micromanaging, but engaged board governance, even now, maybe especially now, in these unsettled times, that our role becomes as a governing board, we need to stick to that role, but we should not concede that role. And she didn't allude to anything in particular, but one gets the sense that that may not always be the case in districts all the way across the state. I think, I don't think that's a challenge for us, but I think it's, it's good to, it's good to reinforce that. As John pointed out pretty clearly, there was a lot of discussion of what the budget will look like. The short answer is, we don't know. What we do know is that we probably won't like it moving forward into the next year, because there is an undeniable economic impact of the sales tax reductions, et cetera. The Igniting New Ideas Summit, which was scheduled for June here in Springfield, would very likely be digital, including the delegate assembly, but there's some logistical challenges to figure out how to do all of that appropriately. The hope remains that the fall meeting will move forward in Kansas City. It's moved away from Tantara. It's moved up to Kansas City for the first time. The new location, lots of opportunities to collaborate with other organizations, including Missouri PTA, the Council of Teachers of the Year, committed. Knock on wood, we will be able to proceed as scheduled. But again, like almost everything else, stay tuned, and we will see. It was, as I said, it was a very productive meeting, lots of things going on. And I can say with confidence that no one at MSBA is asleep at the switch. I think they're proactive, which is precisely why I think they drive a lot of very important policy in the state.
Charles, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for serving in that role for us. And also thank you for giving us this briefing. That is very helpful. Does anybody have any questions for Charles at all that you want to ask at this time? Okay, I'll open up for any more board comments. Thank you so much, Charles. Okay, seeing none at this moment. Anybody can chime in. I am going to read a document that is being brought forth to the Board of Education tonight from the Springfield Council of PTAs. So if you'll give me just a moment to read this to you, I think you will appreciate hearing from our local PTA. On behalf of our local PTA, PTSA members, Springfield Council of PTAs would like to recognize past and current SPS Board of Education members for the important work they have done and continue to do. Now more than ever, it's important that communities support public education so that today's students are prepared to be productive citizens and leader tomorrow. Thank you to all the school board members who care about our children and give so much to our community. We had planned to be, to have a representation of our members attend this meeting to bring you our sincere appreciation. But given the current situation, we are not able to do that. Instead, we bring resolutions from the Missouri Senate and the mayor's office, who were more than happy, and John is holding up a plaque at this time, side note, who were more than happy to join in the celebration and who also offer their thanks for your service. We are also pleased to celebrate the anniversary of the passing of Proposition S and share our appreciation that projects are either on time or ahead of schedule as promised. Again, we thank you for the work that you do on behalf of all children and for being strong advocates for public education. Sincerely, the Springfield Council of PTAs. John's holding, John is holding the plaque that they sent our way, which will be posted within our district so that all can see there. And I'll just make a quick comment, and then anyone else can make a comment to the PTA. I just want to say that we really do appreciate your kind and thoughtful gesture, and we regret that we cannot be in person together tonight. Please know that our, that I know, and I believe my fellow board members know, that the Springfield Council of PTAs plays a critical role in the success of all of our children. And we appreciate your volunteerism. We appreciate your advocacy, from the clothing bank to helping out our teachers in school, to going to Jeff City to advocate for the needs of our students. Every single action that you do, it matters. And so while, while it's kind for you to be thoughtful of us tonight, we would just throw that right back to you and say, you matter. We appreciate you. And I've even seen the Springfield Council of PTA hold some Zoom meetings via Facebook this month. And so you guys are adapting just like our students and teachers are adapting, and we applaud that effort. We applaud that effort. So I'll pause and see if there's any other board comments. And John, I also know we received a proclamation from the city of Springfield today as well, whenever you're ready to give that.
Yeah, so the first thing is a Senate proclamation, recognizing the efforts of the school board and their focus on students. It's got a lot of whereas's, so I'm not going to read all of those for you, because I'll be glad to take a picture and send it your way or email it to you. But we will put it here, so next time you're in the building, you can take a peek. And the other one is a, also has several whereas's that I won't read, but it's a proclamation from the city of Springfield, most importantly, signifying today, April 21st, as School Board Recognition Day. So signed by Mayor Ken McClure, and expresses his appreciation, as well as the rest of the city leadership.
Thank you, John. And thank you, Missouri Senate, and thank you for our local leaders for recognizing the efforts of our board. Any other comments from our board members tonight before we move on? I'm looking here at my notes, and I am going to, actually, moving on to upcoming meetings. Our agenda item 12.02, upcoming meetings. Our next combined board meeting is May 19, which I'm sure you probably already have on your calendar. And as John mentioned, our last day of school is May 21. Moving our agenda along, we, if you have any plus deltas for tonight's meeting, please make sure that you email that to Kathy, our board secretary, and then we can review that and make any adjustments moving forward. We do need to go into executive session tonight. And so the recommended action is that the board meets an executive session to discuss legal and collective bargaining matters as provided in Sections 610.021, Section 1, and 9 of the revised State of Missouri statute.
So moved.
Jill, with the, first, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Charles. Thank you very much. I'm going to assume there's no discussion, but is there any discussion? And hearing none, I will call the roll. Denise?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion